Hold call.
Ms. Romero?
She is not currently present. She may be joining us by phone.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Fimbres.
Here.
Mr. Kazachik.
Here.
Mayor Rothschild.
Here. Item two.
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I think the invocation will be given by Reverend Owen Chandler from Swarro Christian Church. And before, please stand, before we do the invocation tonight, I'd like it if we could have a moment of silence for the victims of Dayton and El Paso, please. Okay, and after the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Reverend Chandler?
Yes, sir. Gracious God, we pause in this moment. We lift our hearts in a time of anguish. We lift our hearts in a time of searching. We question ourselves, our motives, our intentions, as we come into places like this, and pray that we bring our best selves into a time such as this, where we come together as the leaders of a community that seeks your grace, that seeks your mercy, that seeks your love and your justice. And so as we continue in this time of gathering together and discerning what is best for the collective good, may we always be mindful of our language, may we always be mindful of the metaphors that we use, may we represent the very best and the truest of hearts, so that we can set the tone for all of the people who gather. We pray all this in your son's name. Amen.
... to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all.
Item two D.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 242 dated August 6th is received into and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointments in the report? We have a motion and a second to approve the appointments of Philip Nair and Craig Carter, the Barrio Historical Historic Zone Advisory Board, and Sadie Shaw of the Public Art and Community Design Commission. Are Mr. Nair, Mr. Carmis Shaw here tonight? I don't see them, but we want to thank them for their service. All these commissions and citizens serve without pay and help us get our work done. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? If not, let's move on to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 243 dated August 6th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Thursday, August the 15th, no, a week from Thursday, August the 15th, from 9:00 till 10:00 a.m. at the southwest corner of Valencia and Colb Road, there will be an official opening of the new Valencia Road that goes between Wilmot and Colb. The project improvements include, and this is your money that's been spent, to make that a very good use of your money, a good road. The things that have been included are widening that road in that area to six lanes, two new ramps, sidewalks, bike lanes, drainage structures, lighting, traffic signals, and landscaping. This is a great improvement for a sorely needed road improvement. So that's Thursday, August the 15th, at 9:00, 10:00, southwest corner of Valencia and Colb. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, July 19th, I had the privilege of representing Ward 5 in the city of Tucson at the inauguration of the new chief, Ned Norris, and vice chair, Waverly Saunders, for the Tahoe Nation in Salles. I want to congratulate Chairman Norris and Vice Chair Saunders, and look forward to working with them. More than 1,000 people turned out for the Quincy Douglas Neighborhood Center Back-to-School Bash Saturday, July 20th. Many groups and organizations were also present, taking part. Jimmy Johns at the Bridges provided sandwiches for those in attendance. Young people got backpacks and supplies to get ready for the upcoming school year. I want to thank Jerry Neely, the director of the Quincy Douglas Neighborhood Center for organizing the event, and the Quincy Douglas Neighborhood Center staff for coordinating the event, and my staff for their work on this event. I want to thank the organizations, businesses, and groups who took part in this event. I want to thank the vice mayor, Shirley Scott, councilmember Rahina Romero, join me in recognizing these individuals and groups that helped to make this event such a success. The 5th Annual Santa Rosa Recreational Center Back-to-School Bash took place Saturday, July 27th. Thanks to wonderful work of the staff of the Santa Rosa Rec Center, they're able to provide school supplies and materials to the students in need who were from the surrounding neighborhoods. I want to thank the staff of the Santa Rosa Rec Center, Santiago Almazón, Samio Urias, Patricia Matthews, Irene Morales, Terry Nirwitzki, and the groups and organizations who made donations, and staff tables for my staff for their work assisting in getting the donations to this event. On Friday, August 2nd, I had the privilege of speaking to the Southwest Rams Youth Football Program at their season kickoff at Rodeo Park. The Rams have 400 taking part in their football program and 100 of them in their cheerleading program. I wanted to thank Alfred Amesa, Vice President of the Rams, for giving me the opportunity to talk about the importance of education and staying in school and community service. Good luck to the Southwest Rams for their upcoming season. On Saturday, August 3rd, the 8th Annual Arizona Bilingue Kids Expo took place at the Al Pueblo Center. Many families and children came out to get free backpacks and school supplies that were being distributed. I was one of the co-sponsors of the event, which helped those students and families in need. Many groups, organizations, and businesses also took part in the kids expo, which I want to thank them for their participation and support for the event. Alma Gallardo and her staff at Arizona Bilingue coordinated the expo, and I want to thank them for their work and their efforts on this annual event. I also give special thanks to the Tucson Parks and Recreation Department, its director Brent Dennis, and the great staff at the Al Pueblo Center for their work on this event, so that so many were able to get school supplies and other items at the center. I also want to thank Patty Reese, Azteca TV Channel 14, Paul Sicola from KBOA Channel 4 for taking part as well, our Tucson mayor Jonathan Rothschild, Pima County Supervisor Ramon Valdez, and the Mexican consulate were present for this event. Dusty the Road Runner and the Tucson Road Runners were a part of the expo. I want to thank Elaine Becker for her work and having the Road Runners at the event. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention that on Sunday, August 4th, was my 41st wedding anniversary. Please join with me in wishing a happy anniversary to my wife, Mary. I have been truly blessed to have her in my life. May our Lord continue to bless us with many more.
All right, thank you.
Your honor.
Councilman Cunningham.
I had a few things. Number one is, I wanted to actually make it official, not that everybody already doesn't know this already, but school is back in, so we have different traffic patterns. We have different commutes to work. We have longer traffic patterns. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that we welcome back all the kids to school, all the teachers. In about a week, we'll be welcoming back the University of Arizona students again, which has a great impact to our city, and we forget about that. I also want to give a shout out to the Fighting Irish. Not the Fighting Irish from Notre Dame. There's actually a youth 5th and 6th grade flag football team from Tucson, Arizona, named the Fighting Irish. And yesterday, on the campus of UCLA of all places, they won the national championship. So congratulations to Coach Pierce and those boys for representing Tucson. Moreover, I also want to recognize the Sunnyside Little League Majors Team, who won their game this afternoon in San Bernardino, California. Even though they got beat by Hawaii in the opener, they run-ruled Nevada. If they win two more games, they're off to Williamsport in the College World Series. We haven't had a team from Tucson enter the College World Series since 1986, so let's hope that they are successful. This is the third year that Sunnyside Little League has actually gotten to the regionals and they're three-time state champions, so let's hope they can have their breakthrough year. I want to thank everybody who turned out on July 25th at Palaberty Park. We have a new mural at Palaberty Park where the pool is. Palaberty Park had some great upgrades this summer. We finished the new parking lot. We upgraded the pool. We added a splash pad. And finally, we had some students from Palaberty High School, an art class from Palaberty High School, come in and actually paint a new mural on that, and we dedicated the whole park. So I want to thank Heidi McPeak and the students and the artists for making that event possible, making the new mural possible. You can check it out online. There's several different posts from Tucson Parks and Rec, but a lot of great things going on at Palaberty Park. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item four.
City manager's report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 244 dated August 6th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a reminder that we are hosting the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference. Starts the 20th of August and goes through that Friday, the 23rd. Andrew Greenhill and I will attend most of the sessions. Mayor, I know, I think you're making the opening remarks, and Councilman Durham's attending some sessions as well. If you're interested, just let us know. I think Councilman Vice Mayor Scott is as well. Let me know if you're interested in attending the sessions. Be happy to work with you to get you the information. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item five.
Liquor license applications. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 245 dated August 6th is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have five requests for new license, one request for person transfer, two requests for person-location transfer. Under item 5C, we have five requests for special events. Under item 5D, we have three requests for agent change, acquisition of control. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are compliant with city requirements. However, item 5B7 does have a written argument filed in opposition, so that will be considered separately. An appropriate motion would be to forward items 5B 1 through 6, 8, and C 1 through 5, and D 1 through 3 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Get that motion, please.
So moved. Second.
We'll take the other one separately. We have a motion and a second. On that motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, that motion passes. What is the number, Mr. Clerk?
5.
It's 5B7.
5B7. Mr. Durham, I think that's in your ward.
Yes, is a representative of the applicant present?
There he is.
Right here. And I would like to call on Fay, representing the neighborhood, the Limberlos Neighborhood Association, to speak first, and then you can have an opportunity to address her concerns.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've got a couple of handouts. I don't know how to get them to the mayor and council. If someone could, maybe, very much. My name's Fay Goodspeed. I am the spokesperson for Limberlos Neighborhood Association and the president. We are in opposition and have filed a protest on this particular application. And there were three specific reasons that we did bring forth that. If you can see there, there's going to be, to you in just a moment, a map of the area where Fantastics is located, and also a chart indicating blood alcohol levels with appropriate number of drinks. Our first concern is that we do not believe that this is a public convenience. It's not in the best interest of our neighborhood. We have a pocket neighborhood that are very close, probably about 15, 16 little streets that have little neighborhoods in them, single-family dwellings, including children. We have retired folks. We also have some single women that live there. We also know that the traffic that is located there at the corner of Wetmore and Stone will be impacted, which brings me to my second point. I don't know if we can get those maps off to them. Can we do that? Can't do? Okay. The corner of Wetmore and Stone right now is a very busy intersection. Sweet Tomatoes is located there. Fantastics is located directly to the north. And that particular intersection is an incredible scene of numerous traffic accidents, fender benders. And what we're looking at there, if you can get a check, thank you very much, for that map, you will see that Tucson, I'm sorry, that Sweet Tomatoes has an entrance and exit onto Wetmore. And that there also can be an entrance and exit for Fantastics at that same location. The main location for Fantastics getting into would be off of Stone Avenue to the north. But if we look at that map, you can see that that area that is right next to Fantastics entrance there is very congested. Believe it, we have a right turn lane, two straight lanes, and a left turn lane. And traffic trying to come in or go out of Sweet Tomatoes and/or Fantastics has become very congested. And the idea that there could be some real serious accidents there. The second thing that I have handed to you on that second page is, in talking with the applicant at a meeting we had with him, they have recommended that they're only going to allow two drinks for each adult. And that sounds good, but when you look at the blood alcohol level, it will bring a blood alcohol level up to .02%, which is 25% of the legal limit. And we believe that that will have an impairment. If you look at that chart, there is things like an altered mood. There's going to be less able to be able to multitask. And we believe that whether or not it's a family driving with someone who is partially impaired or not, it's going to add to the impact of the traffic, traffic accidents at that particular entrance that we have right there. But the most important thing that we are concerned about is the mixture of children and alcohol. I know it's a series seven. I know it's only beer and wine. But we believe, and in talking to neighbors in the area, all but basically one or two were firmly decidedly against having the series seven at Fantastics. And their main concern was that the mixture of children and liquor would not be acceptable or appropriate. One neighbor actually said to me, if I can read this quote to him, he said, "Let the children have their own place." So we would ask you and sincerely request that you deny the applicant's request for the series seven in this particular area. So thank you for listening to me and being patient.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kevin Cranber. I'm the agent for the applicant, and this is Russell Thompson, the onsite GM. I'll try to keep it short and sweet, because all of your time is valuable. We did meet with Fay and the Neighborhood Association. We discussed the same things we talked about, that she had talked about here tonight. As far as the intersection goes, it sounds like, at least in our conversation Saturday, it was more of a design issue. If you're familiar with Fantastics and that intersection, there is no direct entrance to Fantastics. The long way around would be to go through the Sweet Tomatoes parking lot. The easier access point to Fantastics would be, I'm going to call it the Tucson Mall Access Road, where the closed Five and Diner has been for some time. So again, I don't know that we should be held accountable for a potentially city design issue where it's completely out of our control. The service limitations, yes. Again, what we want to do is try to offer our current clientele a glass of beer or a glass of wine while they sit there and enjoy the park with their children. We're not trying to change our focus in any way, shape, or form. We are not designed or set up to be a bar in any way, shape, or form. Okay? The beer and wine will be in one single cooler behind the counter. Russell is the onsite GM. We're going to file two additional general managers with fingerprint cards, questionnaires, basic and management liquor training if the license is approved. And then all of the staff that will be serving, we'll see, number one, the customer will have a wristband, some type of wristband system, where we can hole punch it or mark it, and that way we can limit it to the two drinks. Okay? Other restaurants in the area, Peter Piper Pizza, nobody has that. I think we're actually going above and beyond. There's nothing to stop me from going to Cheesecake Factory and having four Jack and Diets. Okay? We're going to try to monitor it best we can. And as the agent, again, I'm on retainer for any liquor license-related matter. If granted the license, not only do we have TPD to worry about, we also have to operate under the jurisdiction of the Department of Liquor Investigations and compliance. So we'll actually have more eyeballs on us. Okay? Why we're applying for the license is, the marketplace has changed. People are now, with their discretionary income, they're looking for kind of one-stop shops. AMC Theaters now has liquor licenses. Cinemark has liquor licenses. Disneyland has liquor license. Peter Piper Pizza has liquor license. Dave and Buster's has a liquor license. So it's something that we're trying to just, I don't know, for lack of a better term, keep up with the Joneses, and again, offer something to our already current patrons that we don't offer.
Could you answer, how many of these liquor licenses are beer and wine and a bar or a restaurant?
I don't believe there's many series six liquor licenses in the area. I believe Peter Piper is a series seven. You've got Chipotle, you've got several, several 12s in the area, which have to maintain the 40% food sales. And as we discussed in our meeting Saturday, we'd be happy to apply for a series 12, but we do not believe we'll meet the requirements from the Department of Liquor and the 40% food. We'd love to, because it's a cheaper license. It's $2,000 once issued, as opposed to the number seven liquor license, which we had to pay $19,000 for. So again, we're just trying to offer our current clientele something additionally that we don't have, and again, kind of set us apart. And Russell will be boots on the ground, again, making sure that everything runs smoothly. If there's any questions for myself or Russell, we're happy to answer.
Do you think we could get T-Dot to look at the entrance to Sweet Tomatoes, and particularly access TPD crash data for this intersection?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Durham, we'd be happy to do that.
So I'm prepared to move that we forward the application to the State Liquor Control Board with a recommendation of approval. But I want to explain myself. The I believe any business should have a level playing field with other businesses. And this is not a new location. It's not it's not, it's not, it's not a bar. And I appreciate your two-drink maximum. And I really believe that, you know, as I say, any business should be allowed a be allowed a level, a level playing field to compete with other businesses in its market. And for that reason, I'm going to, as well as the two-drink limit and the location is already there, I, I'm going to move to recommend forwarding to the Liquor Control Board with a, with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
I motion a second. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, we're going to move on to item six.
Call to the audience.
This time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience will last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the ads and open meeting law, individual council members may ask city manager to review a matter, ask it may be placed on our future agenda, respond to questions made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. We have a number of cards here tonight. I'm going to ask one person first, just so I understand what category she may be in. Kara Bissell? What is your, what is your, what is your topic, ma'am? Pull it down.
There's actually three topics along with this, the election coming up.
Okay. All right. We get three minutes. So before you start, you sound like you're in a miscellaneous. We've got a number of miscellaneous, and I'm going to try to get each of them because they're one person. Then we have three topics that there's multiple speakers on. Nuclear disarmament, of which we have a resolution, putting the Proposition 205 on the ballot, of which we are, we will do tonight, required by state law, and Tobacco 21. And so, as to each of those, I'm going to try to pick selective speakers, probably three of each, maybe two for nuclear disarmament. But I'm going to take, so we may go a little longer than 30 minutes, but we're going to get representatives, representative speakers for each topic. So I guess I called on you first. Go ahead, Ms. Bissell.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Kara Bissell. I reside in Ward Four of Tucson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city clerk, city attorney, everyone's here. I appreciate the honor to be received by your call. I would like to thank Member Shirley Scott, particularly, for seeing me at the bash here a few weeks ago. And we're, all the kids got a lot of good fun and backpacks and blood was given. And, and I saw her doing the, the, a lot of the work in the kitchen, working in there. Anyway, it's my honor to speak before you and the Tucson city audience. I am representing the real Green Deal as the Green Party candidate for Ward Four, council member. I will appreciate Tucsonans' vote for me. It will be my honor to serve the Tucson population generally and Ward Four specifically. We have a number of things, justice for all individuals. We all strive for it. Allowing refugees from all countries, the right to seek asylum, the right to be free from oppression, the ability to stay together as a family and from being treated as criminals is what the November Tucson ballot option is all about. May we, all voters in Tucson, come together to vote for Proposition 205. Stewardship is needed. People all agree with this. Stewardship's definition needs clarification, though. The Rosemont Mine Project would be the third largest mine, strip mine, in the country. They, by their own words, say they're going to drain our aquifer. It was allowed, if it was allowed to proceed. Water is life. Rosemont Mine must not be developed. In the past time to diminish the military, it is, excuse me, it is past time to diminish the military industrial complex. In our democracy, we are privileged to choose the best actions for our society locally to globally. As a U.S. Army veteran, I do not have an exclusive on the harm warfare, warfare does to people and the environment. As a retired teacher from New York City, Long Island City High School, I've been first, I've seen firsthand the poison of propaganda that changed me for a few days, from a conscientious objector to a person wanting to make a glass parking lot out of the entire Middle East. To the best of my ability, I strive never to get to that point again. This last weekend with Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso, Texas, further shows how gun control measures are shown to be needed. Peace through nonviolence is the effective lasting means to protect our civilization. Finding ways to develop our country without militarization imperialism is the sane way to go ahead forward for our society.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bissell. Appreciate it. Jill Hunter? Come on up. I've been short of that one.
Hi, my name is, hi, my-
Take the other one, the tall one, and just move it, adjust it to your, wherever you need it to be.
Hi, my, it's not-
Is it on?
Yes.
It's on. We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Jill Hunter. I've been a resident of Tucson for 10 years. And I really love Tucson. It's truly a second-chance city. Due to being on a low income, I use the bus. I am grateful I can walk to the bus. But there's one thing that disturbs me immeasurably. Every time I see a person in a walker wheelchair, carrying a cane, perhaps a family, in the unrelenting sun. These stops, these bus stops are inhumane, hellish, and downright dangerous for everyone. The no shade issue needs to be addressed. Someone once said, "The measure of a moral society is how they care for the least of the society." The people that ride the bus are the least of Tucson, at least in the community. Excuse me, I'm not cutting down, I'm a bus rider. I'm a regular bus rider. I am not cutting anybody down that rides the bus. But where are the communities of faith? Where are our community members? Would you let your grandmother or aunt sit in 105-degree weather for a half hour or more? Where are corporations? I personally think it would be a great idea to put a contest in neighborhoods where people adopt a bus stop, and they construct one that gives shade at 2:00, 3:00, anytime in with summer. We've got five months of summer. The summer goes from, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous, June, mostly starts in May, that's six months, to October, the end of October. It is an issue, this is an environmental issue, this is with a greenhouse effect, it is not going to go away. And this is an everybody issue. Everybody hates sitting at those bus stops. There is an effect of shade. I don't know what they were thinking when they built those. And I'm sure other people have stood up here and complained about it. I don't know why it wasn't addressed. But I really think with neighborhood pride and community and people of faith, okay, I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Andres Portella? Is Andres Portella here?
Buenos dias. My name is Andres Portella. I'm here, not on behalf of any of the organizations I work with, but I work with Southwest Fair Housing Council and the Barrios Neighborhood Coalition. I am here to talk to you about three things specifically. And if you get nothing from what I'm asking you this evening, please remember data, community, and representation in regards to the gentrification task force. In order to be effective, I'm asking my community leaders to begin the process of exploring gentrification from the, from the standpoint of understanding. Understanding comes from data and not just speculation. At this moment, it is a belief of the community that we are seeing mass displacement due to outside investment, continuous propping up of business, and incentives given to businesses with no real ties to our city. As we understand this narrative, we create a task force. What the community sees as pacification, we are used to pacification. What we are asking for is real change and for it to be possible. And the only way that this can be possible is through quantifiable data. So what I'm asking you for is for the city to lead a study that focuses on mass displacement and gentrification, independent from the gentrification task force you guys have already created. So tonight, you are, you will inevitably be asked to delay, to do, to delay the process of, due to a community developer, you will be asked to delay the process until you hire a community development director. What I'm asking you for is during this time of, you guys looking for a housing and community development director, please consider community and development. Right now, the neighborhoods are reclaiming spaces, reclaiming vacant spaces and creating new spaces such as green spaces and community centers. What I'm asking you to do is when you hire a community and development director, have someone who focuses on community and housing development. Lastly, representation. There have been tons of conversations around gentrification in the city. Our default is to encourage diversity and inclusion. I don't need you to look at diversity and inclusion. I need you to look for diversity and incorporation. Incorporation of diversity looks like socioeconomics, age, race, gender, ability versus disability. Equity looks like diversity. Equity looks data-driven. Equity, equity looks at the, at semantics, i.e. the definition of gentrification, which is the displacement of people from neighborhoods they were historically placed in. So what I'm asking you to do is look at that definition of gentrification and ignore free market economics, which is our current definition. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Chris Isbell? Is Chris Isbell here?
I'm here to discuss handicap parking downtown, mostly downtown, but I've seen it in other places, where there is a lack of the wheelchair right in the middle of the spot. Because I received a ticket, my client received a ticket, because we just didn't see, and maybe we're just middle-aged guys, we just didn't see the placard on the totem pole. There's like a, it's like they're stacked. And I saw the top one, but I didn't see the next one. I still don't know what the third one is. And when I backed out, I didn't see the wheelchair. And so I just, I've taken a bunch of pictures around town at this karate studio. There's the wheelchair. See the wheelchair there?
Sure.
The spot I was at had a bicycle, there's a bicycle right here, for the bicycle path, with no wheelchair. And so I'm asking the city to get these wheelchairs down. I'm also a disabled vet. And I know I took a spot that should have been for a handicap. That lady previously talked about handicap people. I took a spot, I didn't want to take the spot, but I just didn't see the handicap, the little, the wheelchair there. So I'm asking if the city manager, whoever's in charge, gets these, these wheelchairs placed all throughout the city, so then, so then people that don't want, I'm sure there's people in the audience that have parked at these spots accidentally. And then they go see the judge and, and they, they deal with the judge. So that's about all I want to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Manager, can you have Mr. Durbin contact our veteran here and see what's going on? Okay. Robert Royce? Is Robert here? There he is. Okay.
I'm Robert Royce. On the first Tuesday in January, I went up to the clerk's office and inquired about how many signatures it would take to run for mayor. And I was told it was 2,642. I just stood there in shock. I went home, and the next day, the mayor announced he was not running. I went back a week later, and I filed my paperwork to run for mayor. And the next day, Rahina Romero filed her paperwork, and two days later, Steve Farley. I ran for mayor as an independent to deliver pure water, financial responsibility, automatic government, if that be the will of the people, nonpartisan elections, and et cetera. Well, we're not getting any of that, because I didn't make the ballot, although I sincerely tried. And I've got my, I've got my Democratic nominee, Democratic primary ballot right here. It's got three names on it. Randy Dormand is first. I watched her for five minutes at the El Rio debate, and I realized that what she stands for is a total elimination of property taxes for rich developers. And to move that entire burden onto the homeowners, renters, and small businesses, sort of like what you've been doing. We get to Rahina Romero, who has run a really dazzling, sparkling, pretty wonderful, clean campaign. I know she's proud, and she should be. Unfortunately, she's a luxury that I cannot afford as mayor, because Rahina has made it clear that she wants to eliminate all taxes for rich developers and move all of that entire burden onto homeowners, renters, and, I mean, I've been sitting here watching for 12 years, so if anybody's in a position to comment, it's me. She wants to move the entire burden to the, you know, the people least able to afford it. So, there's one name left, Steve Farley, who has run a campaign that lacks depth, in my opinion. But he is not part of this machine. He has not said anything to indicate that he's going to increase my tax burden by absolving more rich people of theirs. And furthermore, I need to get my automatic initiative passed. Steve Farley, Steve Farley thinks he wants to be governor, and I support him in that. So he's not going to be able to just throw up his hands and say, "No, I can't run the city," and oppose my initiative. So for those reasons, I am voting for Steve Farley in the primary. And I ask my supporters and all those people who would have enjoyed voting for me to do the same thing. Thank you.
Colette Althaffer?
Good evening. I'm Colette Althaffer, and I'm a resident of Tucson. Accountability and responsibility are interesting words. Look up the meaning of one, and you will find the other word is part of its definition. As elected officials, you have a fiduciary duty to be both accountable and responsible to the people you serve. The numerous incentives you have been handing out are a case in point. The G-Plat is the most frequent incentive given, with the majority of them allowing the applicant to avoid their tax obligations for up to eight years. So if you are going to allow an applicant to avoid paying taxes, one would expect there to be some form of accountability attached to that perk. And yet, we can find no such mechanism. Now, you may think that the required economic analysis is an accountability mechanism. But that report is generated by a company in Phoenix using information supplied by the applicant. There is nothing to stop that applicant from providing the numbers needed to create the illusion that their project meets the statutory requirements- that their project meets the statutory requirements. After all, they know that no one is setting benchmarks or following up to see if they have actually delivered on the rosy promises they made. So who do you believe should be accountable and responsible? Judging from what we are finding, it is the ordinary citizens, not developers or business people. You cannot promise a G-Plat applicant that you will refund up to $875,000 of their public infrastructure improvements and then ask ordinary citizens to double-tax themselves to pay for public infrastructure improvements. You cannot allow developers to employ a scorched-earth approach to their projects or look the other way while they deliberately flood our neighborhoods and then add a fee to our water bills so that ordinary citizens can pay to replace dying trees and alleviate street flooding. You cannot weaken zoning codes or dismiss our neighborhood plans and then cry crocodile tears while ordinary citizens are displaced by the gentrification that your lopsided policies help create. If we are going to have a community that is worth living in, then you cannot keep asking ordinary citizens to carry the load. Everyone, including you and the privileged few, will have to be accountable and responsible, or there won't be a Tucson in the future. Climate change, human greed, and failed leadership will cede to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Claire. JP Salvatiera? JP?
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Jonathan Salvatiera. I'm a retired railroader, native Tucsonan, and a native advocate for change and democratic reform. I'm troubled during this election cycle to resolve the best leadership for the mayor and other open council offices. Briefly, I will clarify the past actions by incumbents that attest their individual value to the voting public. When SP 1070 was being introduced in our state, I walked a three-mile trek in protest alongside Ward Councilwoman and Vice Mayor Shirley Scott. Humility knows no ethnic boundaries in her legacy to our city. Her conscience was pure. Her intent has always been clear. Thank you, Shirley, for your public duty. I have followed the candidate trail at the El Rio Center, the YWCA, and Rincon High School candidate forums with video coverage to document policy positions by mayor and Ward 1 candidates. Miguel Ortega's background is uniquely qualified by the depth of his keen responses, knowledge base as a previous council aide, and procedural insight to lead our community's special needs in Ward 1. The mayoral race seems difficult to, at first, assess because it requires a deep knowledge of base and proven skill set in addition to a heartfelt desire to put the city's numerous challenges in keen balance with an unencumbered, free-handed, and transparent approach, dealing with bureaucratic deceptive practice. I found that character in Steve Farley, at a broad level of expertise that other challengers came in short. He wants to create a legacy to complete his public service record. In contrast, Rahina needs this election to elevate her status to higher office. I fear her ambition will be a continued detriment to transparency in office. During Rahina's watch, as she entered the city council in 2007, the Rio Nuevo Investment Group created taxpayer bond losses of over $230 million. If bond authority oversight was her professed expertise, why was she silent? Now, last month, the council approved IDA bonds for $65 million to the new El Rio Special Interest District for downtown development.
JP?
In closing, when IDA bond funding for minority in El Rio flood control infrastructure has languished in her ward for over 20 years, she abandoned her El Rio again in negotiating the failure of a sellout to El Rio Gulf Minority Green Space for nonprofit Grand Canyon University Special Interest. You choose not to protect the low-income and middle-residents
JP?
of Ward 1 by record. No one wants your vision of gentrification benefits and added tax burden, development fee waivers,
JP, I need you to stop. We got a lot of people still waiting.
I appreciate your time.
JP? All right. Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, now we've got three. Now we, yeah, don't forget your phone there, up there. All right, so now we've got three groups that have a number of speakers. I'm going to take two on the nuclear disarmament resolution, three on the sanctuary city resolution, and three on the T-21 resolution. That put us over time, but I think we'll be able to get representative samplings from that. So we'll do nuclear disarmament first. Kathy Altman, is Kathy here?
Kathy Altman, I'm a Tucson Ward 1 resident of multiple decades. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having the nuclear disarmament resolution on the agenda. As we all know, two years ago, this summer, 122 nations represented at the U.N. passed a resolution to prohibit nuclear arms for the planet. The nine nuclear weapon-holding countries were not included in that 122-nation vote. At that time, a campaign in the U.S. to have municipalities and states, groups, faith groups, environmental groups, peace groups, et cetera, to sign on in support of the U.N. Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons Commenced. So I am very thankful to you that you have put this on your consent agenda item tonight. We are today on Hiroshima Remembrance Day. 74 years ago today, the first atom bomb dropped in Japan. And last year, on this day, Baltimore, Maryland, was the first city to also adopt the same resolution that we are honored to adopt tonight. So I want to thank you very much for that. Many Tucson groups supported this. And thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I want to have the last 30 seconds or so of my time as a moment of silence for all the people who died in Japan 74 years ago. Thank you.
Ted Warmbrand? Is Ted here? There he is. Oh, he was going to sing. You got this in like a 45, the three-minute version?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, good, Ted.
It was an American who translated the Turkish poem that got put to a tune that is sung to an Irish legend. I come, I stand at every door, though none can hear my silent tread. I knock and yet remain unseen, for I am dead, for I am dead. I'm only seven, although I died in Hiroshima long ago. I'm seven now, as I was then. When children die, they do not grow. My hair was scorched by swirling flame. My eyes grew dim, my eyes grew blind. Death came and turned my bones to dust, and they were scattered by the wind. I need no fruit, I need no rice. I need no sweets or even bread. I ask for nothing for myself, for I am dead, for I am dead. All that I ask is that for peace. You stand today, you stand today, so that the children of this world may live and grow and laugh and play. So that the children of this world may live and grow and laugh and play.
Very cool. Thank you, Ted. Okay, we'll move on now to the sanctuary cities. I will call first on Marion Chubon.
Hello, my name is Marion Chubon. I'm in Paul Cunningham's ward. And...
Neighborhood, you're in my neighborhood. You live like...
Well, we live like a block away. That is true. So I intended to speak about something else, but today, right before I came here, I went to the city clerk's office. Thank you, Mr. Randolph. You run a tight ship. It's awesome. And I was filing letters in favor of Proposition 205, which is the sanctuary city. And while I was filing the letters that were from immigration attorneys, an undocumented student, pediatricians, a researcher on sanctuary cities at the U of A, I happened to be able to see the letters that were filed by some of you members. And so I just want to point out to the people here that there are people in the city council, so Mr. Durham, Mr. Fimbres, and Mr. Kozacik, filed letters lying to Tucsonans. So they said in their letter that they are against the proposition because it will prohibit our ability to collaborate, the police ability to collaborate with federal agencies on things such as rape analysis, fingerprint analysis, and drug interdiction. And what they failed to mention is that that is not true, that there is a memorandum of understanding that is included in our bill. So it's just that we would have to sign an agreement, okay? So they also said that an officer cannot determine detainee's immigration status in cases of child molestation, domestic violence, sexual misconduct. That is also not true because the police are first responders. Those types of things, a person's immigration status is done at the county jail, okay? So they are lying to voters, and I don't appreciate it. I want to thank you, Mrs. Scott and Paul Cunningham and Rahina for not signing on to that letter and spending your own money to lie to voters. And it's time that you stop doing that. Thank you very much.
Hold on now. Okay. Move on, move on. Next one, Zaira Livia?
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Zaira Livia. I do live in the city, and I am here with People's Defense Initiative. For months now, our campaign has been asked, "Why sanctuary and why now?" The answer has always been the same. We are living in turbulent times. The national rhetoric is increasingly violent, racist, xenophobic, and anti-immigrant. Being an immigrant-friendly city is no longer good enough, not by a long shot. In times such as these, we must do more. And here we are, the tragedy that we knew was waiting to happen on Saturday morning, four hours from Tucson, in El Paso, a city much like ours. A white supremacist opened fire in a Walmart, killing 22 people, eight of them Mexican migrants like myself and like my family. Most of those shot and injured were Latinx people of color. ABC News reported earlier today that the shooter cased the store, looking for Mexicans, and then went back out, armed himself, and came back in when he found enough of us. Authorities are still unsure as to the total number of injured victims because some undocumented people are still not seeking treatment for their injuries or reunifying with family members because they fear being turned over to ICE and Border Patrol by police. ICE has even agreed to suspend immigration enforcement, and yet the fear persists people will still not come forward. You know what our sanctuary city initiative does? It'll add hard law that makes hospitals, clinics, safe spaces for migrants to seek treatment. Hard laws that disvow collaboration between our police department and ICE and Border Patrol. And for victims of crime, an expedited certification for U-visas, all of which are hard policies not included in your immigrant-friendly general orders. And while Mexicans like myself and my family are being haunted with assault rifles by white supremacists, Mayor Jonathan Rothschild, Steve Kozacik, Fimbres, and Paul Durham wrote and filed at $240 apiece arguments against sanctuary city policy. To be clear, you're pushing against real protections and policies which would foster trust, safety, and justice for our undocumented community. As a migrant and a longtime resident, I am appalled by you. What a shame. Sanctuary policies matter. Rhetoric as we see matters. Taking bold moral positions matters. Defending migrants and people of color against violence of white supremacy and hate must be at the forefront of your policy and your debate. Any elected leadership that fails to do so during this time in history is wholly inadequate, and you should resign. We do not have the luxury to sit by as Black Americans, Latinos, and migrants are gunned down by emboldened white supremacists. Business as usual is null and void. And we, and I, am here to teach you that lesson, one way or another.
All right. One more. Come on. Bets Putnam Hidalgo? Is Bets here?
We'd like to use both of these microphones if we can.
Okay.
This one is perfectly set up for little short people. Tonight is a great night for you all. You have a chance to vote in favor of something that will produce peace in our world and something that will produce peace in our city. And I urgently hope that you support both of those things. If I had the power, we'd be a sanctuary, completely safe city for immigrants too. There'd be no weedling, there'd be no pleading. With all the politicians afraid of Trump in Arizona to do the right thing. We all know that right thing means no more deportations based on broken taillights. It means safety for all. It means that due process is a part of our charter, protected from partisan and political net... protected from partisan and political nitwits. All over this day, we do have the power. The people have the power to bring up the vote for a sanctuary city. Tucson protects immigrants from horrible violence. We'll legalize love that flows to our immigrant neighbors from all over this town.
Okay, thank you for that. We will move on now to T21, the Tobacco 21. We'll take three speakers, and then we'll move on to the consent items and get them approved. Jenny Chadwick.
What an act to follow. I have to say, this has been one of the most thoughtful, engaged, diverse conversations. I travel around the country. I'm the Western Regional Director for the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation. I cover all states west of Mississippi. I was here in front of you a year ago with a group of high school students to ask you to raise the age of tobacco products to 21. You've gone through a year-long process. That's included 12 stakeholder meetings with the county and a very thoughtful city stakeholder meeting. Maybe all of that outcome and all of that process wasn't communicated to you, and that's what I heard earlier in the county meeting. Because I heard the supervisors ask questions about what was happening that were addressed in the memo, a memo that clearly, Kozaczek, you read, because you knew that the retail license fee was in that memo. The idea that the health department would do enforcement was also in that memo, the way they would do enforcement. But there was questions about how it would be enforced, if it would be police-enforced. We want to be clear that any penalty is going off on the retailer, making a profit off of selling a deadly addictive substance to our kids, not to punish the kids, and that was brought up. The retail industry brought up the idea of putting a penalty on the clerk. They see them as a low-wage disposable worker, and they fire them when they're caught selling to minors. And then they just turn over, and the state only penalizes the clerk. And so, it is up to the local communities to hold the retailers making a profit accountable for selling the product. And so, the retailers, they've asked for amendments that will weaken the public health goal of this policy. I want you guys to know that the process produced one of the most, a strong best practices policy. We have a national model that's been signed on by many of the public health organizations across the country, and I'll distribute that model to you. But what it says is the penalty needs to go on the retailer, not the clerk or the kids, right? That it needs to be substantive enough that it gets the retailer to stop selling to the kids. And that means that by the second or the third violation, there would be a suspension or revocation of license. As you mentioned earlier, the kids are going back to school. We know that youth use rates have just skyrocketed on e-cigarette and vape products. We're asking you to take leadership on this. And I know that you want to go in tandem with the county. There's no research to show that people, kids, drive down the street. In fact, Tobacco 21 research is showing that the kids don't drive down the street. By adopting a policy in your local community, you will help impact the kids here. There's also conversations to punt this to the state. We saw what happened at the state last legislative session. I was down here many times, talking to legislators. The public health bill didn't move. The tobacco industry bill would have stripped your local rights to do anything else in the future for tobacco. When we first came here a year ago, we had 25% of the nation's population covered. We now have 50% covered by local policy. We had 330 local policies. We now have 488. We want to add Tucson and Pima County to that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming, flying here too.
Yes.
Brian Hummel.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Hummel. I'm the Arizona Director, Government Relations Director, for the American Cancer Society Cancer Mission Network, based in Phoenix. But very much appreciate you giving me the time to come and speak today. The main thrust of what we would like to bring to you is we're urging you to adopt, as Jenny mentioned, the strongest tobacco control measure in the state of Arizona. And I think it's important to go beyond the Tobacco 21 element of it, because there are other elements that are so critical. And you've heard the folks from Big Tobacco talk about things that they don't want to happen. And so, when you look at this, it is a public health epidemic. It's been talked about by national health figures in the United States. And we want to make sure that when you have a public health epidemic and public health crisis, that you use a public health solution as opposed to a solution that's offered by Big Tobacco. With that, we thank you for considering the policy, the road that you are on, and offer our support to make this happen in September, as you mentioned in your work-study session earlier today. So again, thank you very much, and we urge you, in the strongest terms, to make a strong public policy, public health policy effort on tobacco control, all of the elements of tobacco control. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And we'll close with Mike Humphrey.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you again. Thanks for the opportunity to address you on this most important public health issue. My name is Mike Humphrey. I've been a resident of this community for over 40 years, and I currently serve on the Pima County Board of Health. Over the last 20 years, the Tucson City Council has been a leader in protecting the health and safety of our residents and visitors. The community and the council worked together to pass smoke-free ordinances in the early 2000s that directly led to the adoption of Smoke Free Arizona. You courageously acted to protect families from a dangerous pose by secondhand smoke, over the strenuous opposition of the bar and restaurant owners, who warranted dire economic circumstances if you adopted such ordinances. The economic fact, let's see, the economic, in fact, in fact, those organizations flourished. There's more bars and restaurants here than ever before. The proposed changes being presented today are sensitive to the concerns of the affected businesses. I have no doubt that, like the restaurants and bars, tobacco product retailers will continue to survive and flourish. Although these products are legal, they nevertheless pose a significant health risk to our youth and the entire community, and as such, must be monitored. Those health dangers are well documented in the memorandum you received from the county staff that was sent to the board of supervisors this morning. There are three issues before you today, and that you'll need to be considering as you move forward. First, we ask you to recognize that tobacco products, like alcohol, just like alcohol, are such a significant health risk to our community that they should be available only to persons 21 years of age. Besides protecting the health of the potential purchaser, raising the age would significantly limit the distribution of tobacco products to underage persons. Secondly, we ask you to enhance your current existing licensing system for tobacco product retailers to ensure that they are operating in a safe and lawful manner by the addition of additional enforcement measures, which are currently not happening. Third, we ask you to recognize that vaping must be legally treated in the same way as tobacco. Vaping poses a growing threat to the health and safety of our community and has basically wiped out the gains made over the last two decades in getting youth to refrain from tobacco products. Historically, the Tucson City Council has been a leader in protecting the health and safety of our community. I strongly encourage you to continue that leadership by adopting changes to Tucson City Code, Chapters 7 and 11. Your adoption of this ordinance is a direct reflection of your concern for the safety and well-being of our children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we're going to move on to Item 7.
Consent Agenda Items A through U.
Reports from the City Manager on the consent agenda are received and to be made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, in the Seating's Consent Agenda, Item A is approval amendments. Item B is a resolution declaring support for the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Item C is to grant agreement with the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission for drug control and system improvement for fiscal year 2020. Item D is a labor agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Item E is a memorandum of agreement with Northwest Fire District and regional jurisdictions for funding of radio communications equipment through the Assistance of Firefighters Grant Program. Item F is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the incarceration of city prisoners. Item G is an intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Transportation to designate segments of Old US Route 80 as a historic roadway. Item H is real property conveyance of right-of-way via the paper-plat policy for property located within the Barrio Royal subdivision. Item I is real property conveyance of right-of-way via the paper-plat policy for property located within the Riverfront Estates subdivision. Item J, intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the Silver Bell Road, Iron Road, to Grant Road improvement project. This item has been continued at the request of staff. Item K is boards, committees, and commissions dissolving the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee and creating the Complete Streets Coordinating Council. Item L is budget and internal audit, approving the internal audit plan for fiscal year 2020. Item M is a final plat S-19023 of Royal Reserve lots 1 through 49, common areas A and B. Item N is a final plat S-19008, Coronado Heights, lot 8, parcel A and B. Item O is a final plat S-19012, La Estancia de Tucson, Block 26, lots 1 through 47, and common areas A through D. Item P is a final plat, Las Cabanas, lots 1 through 15, and common areas A1 through A4, B1 through B2, and C. Item Q is a final plat S-18070, Warrior Village, lots 1 through 8, and common areas A, B, C, and D. Item R is elections designating voting locations and appointing election board workers for the city elections to be held August 27th and November 5th, 2019. Item S is a grant agreement with the Arizona Attorney General's Office for Victims' Rights Programs. Item T is elections calling a special election for November 5th, 2019, for purposes of...
Before a vote on this motion, on this item, the city attorney has a statement to read.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I don't believe a statement's needed, so we'll wait and see if there's any questions about the consent agenda.
Okay. Well, let me have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
No motion, second to approve the consent agenda. Any, anything? Nope. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that's done. Let's move on to Item 8.
Zoning SC-1904 Verizon Grant Road, C1 Zone, Wireless Communications Facility, Special Exception Land Use, Ordinance Adoption, Report from City Manager, Report from Zoning Examiner, Ordinance Number 11667.
The city does not change or defy immigration laws. As Congress is charged, change immigration laws.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, now, everybody, everybody, let's calm down. None of that. All right, ma'am. Thank you. We're on to Item 8.
Zoning SC-1904 Verizon Grant Road, C1 Zone, Wireless Communications Facility, Special Exception Land Use, Ordinance Adoption, Report from City Manager, Report from Zoning Examiner, Ordinance Number 11667.
City Manager's Communication Number 248, dated August 6, is received and to be made part of the record. This is a special exception land use request for property located south of Grant Road and east of Country Club Road. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance, which establishes conditions for approval. The zoning examiner recommends approval of the special exception request. Is the applicant or a representative present?
Ma'am, are you agreeable to the proposed requirements that's been set forth?
Yes.
Okay. I guess we ought to get your name and who you represent.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Lamro. I'm with Pinnacle Consulting. And 1426 North Marvin Street, Gilbert, Arizona, 8522.
And you represent the applicant?
And I represent, yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, you requested to read Ordinance 11667 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11667 relating to zoning, a special exception land use wireless communication facility, SC-1904 Verizon Grant Road, located approximately 140 feet south of Grant Road and 400 feet east of Country Club Road, approving with conditions the construction of a wireless communication facility disguised as a broadleaf tree, monopole, 50 feet in height, with six antennas placed within a 900-square-foot, 30 by 30-feet lease area in the southwestern corner of a .34-acre parcel in the C1 Zone, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure? Councilman Kozaczek?
Yeah, Michelle, I just saw some email exchanges between you and the Pellebry Neighborhood Association earlier today. I'd just ask you to follow up with that. I didn't see any replies, but I know there's been some changes in project management since this thing began, so anyway. With that, I'd move that we adopt the location.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and second. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Ordinance 11667 passes by a vote of 6-0. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item 9.
Zoning SC-1911 AT&amp;T, Wilmont Road, RH Zone, Wireless Communications Facility, Special Exception Land Use, Ordinance Adoption, Report from City Manager, Report from Zoning Examiner, Ordinance Number 11668.
City Manager's Communication Number 249, dated August 6, is received and to be made part of the record. This is a special exception land use request for property located east of Wilmont Road and south of Old Vale Connection Road alignment. Staff recommends approval of the wireless communications tower as a special exception land use in the RH Zone, and adoption of the ordinance, which establishes conditions for approval. The zoning examiner recommends approval of the special exception request subject to the recommended conditions. Is the applicant or representative present on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Steve Olson, representing AT&amp;T. My address is 10641 North Camino Rosas, Nuevo Villas, New Orleans.
Is the AT&amp;T agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, you requested to read Ordinance 11668 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11668 relating to zoning, a special exception land use wireless communication facility, SC-1911 AT&amp;T, Wilmont Road, located approximately 100 feet east of Wilmont Road and 750 feet south of Old Vale Connection Road alignment, approving with conditions the construction of a wireless communication facility, monopole, 100 feet in height, located within a 625-square-foot lease area in the RH Zone, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 11668.
Second.
Got a motion, second on that matter. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Ordinance 11668 passes by a vote of 6-0. Item 10.
Zoning C91807, Mayor and Pearson, Magdalena, SR to RX1, Ordinance Adoption, Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11669.
City Manager's Communication Number 250, dated August 6, is received and to be made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you requested to read Ordinance 11669 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11669 relating to zoning, admitting zoning district boundaries in the area located on the north side of East Magdalena Road, approximately 300 feet east of Gollub Road and 2,000 feet west of South Harrison Road, in case C91807, Mayor and Pearson, Magdalena, SR to RX1, and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure? Councilman Merrick Cunningham?
Your Honor, from what I remember, this is a renew of an older zoning. I'm going to vote that we pass and adopt 11669.
Second.
Got a motion, a second on that. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Ordinance 11669 passes by a vote of 6-0. Item 11.
Tucson Code, admitting Chapters 7 and 11 relating to age restrictions for purchase of tobacco and nicotine delivery products and establishing a license enforcement program. You know, this item was continued to the second meeting in September.
Okay. Item 12.
Economic Development Authorizing Rio Nuevo Multipurpose Facilities District to Provide G-Plet Abatement for 117 North Sixth Avenue, Report from City Manager, Resolution Number 23069.
City Manager's Communication Number 260, dated August 6, is received and to be made part of the record.